Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, March 23rd, at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for joining us. Thank you. My comments will be brief. We reached, I think, another great milestone. We've got our children back in school. We continue to see cases during the week, but manageable. I would ask everyone, continue to stay safe and be safe with the protocols that are in place. And I think we'll continue to be a good place in keeping our children in school. Another great milestone is the vaccination of our teachers and staff that took place last Friday and Saturday. So, a big thank you to Alicia Kosucci, her nursing staff, who have just done an incredible job. I think Alicia truly works 24 by 7 in this district when you see the emails and the work that has to be done. So, thank you, Alicia, to you and your team. Dr. David Knopf, our first selectman, who helped behind the scenes with organizing the vaccinations. A lot of community volunteers, a lot of teacher volunteers. And thank you to our teachers and staff for going through that process and taking the vaccinations. We're on our way, and hopefully there's continued to be light at the end of the tunnel. Also, a shout out, I saw some great pictures and photos up at the high school the other day. Our seniors celebrating 100 days to graduation. I hope there is some form of graduation celebration. I think we'll do everything in our power to make sure there is to celebrate the incredible success of our seniors and all the challenges that they've worked through and overcome over the last year. So, with that, I will turn it over to public comment. Michelle.
Good evening. If you have any comments, please use the raise hand icon. You will have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address. Jocelyn Delancey, you are recognized and unmuted.
Hi, everybody. Jocelyn Delancey, 110 Commons Park North, Stanford. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Ed, the Department of Health, and most importantly, Alicia Kosucci, for getting us vaccinated. It was such a wonderful event. Everybody feels a huge sense of relief, and we are so grateful for making that commitment to us and helping us get our first dose of the vaccine. I'm looking forward to the second dose, hoping that all goes well and no reactions. But, you know, we are very excited and so, so, so grateful. So, we just wanted to thank the town for committing to us and making sure that we had that element to help keep us safe. So, thank you very much, and I wish you all a great rest of the week.
Thank you, Mrs. Delancey, and thank you to your team and all the efforts of organizing and staffing them.
There are no more raised hands at this time?
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, and special welcome to those people who are zooming in this evening. I'll extend a warm welcome to Dr. Lemons, who will be joining us a wee bit later on this evening. I would also like to reiterate, if you don't mind, that the comments of the Board Chair, I'm tremendously proud of our administrators, teachers, and staff's effort to provide the quality education thus far that we have and to provide as much in-person learning as we have for our young people here in Darien. And our students themselves have been fantastic through this also. So, to all those volunteers who are staff, our nursing staff, Alicia, David, and so on, they just did a phenomenal job. Not only was it organized quickly, but it was impeccably run. I want to say that the staff have been deeply appreciative, as Jocelyn has said, of the Board's outreach to them through this period of time. So, again, we very much appreciate that. It's just, the milestone is pretty significant. Who would have thought that literally a year, more or less, to the day type thing would be when all the kids would come back again? We've learned a lot in a year, and together we've shown that we can navigate significant challenges. So, those were a couple of milestones this week, and it's just wonderful to have the students back. And it was wonderful, I think, the students themselves. I'm sure there's a couple of happy parents out in the town, right? And the households were a wee bit different this week, but it's just wonderful to have everybody back. Thanks for struggling along. We have cases here and there. To share, actually, if I may, just share with you tonight's cases. Just, this will serve as your update, if you don't mind. We have three cases at the high school, one at the middle school, one at Holmes, and one at Royal. So, a total of six cases, five students, one staff member. And for quarantine, we have 72 people quarantined. That's 63 students and nine staff members. So, you can see how we're sort of working through. We're still, we still have cases, predominantly recently at the high school and middle school, which may or may not be unexpected. And most of them continue to be outside activities, is what we're seeing. But, anyway, that's your update. If you don't mind, I'll ask Alicia to feel free to communicate that to our parents. Today, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed and adopted. And as far as Darien's preliminary numbers for education, it's about $1.4 million. Now, that's a three-year grant. We are awaiting guidance from the Treasury as to what qualifies and what are the rules and regulations regarding that. So, we'll be receiving that soon. ESOTU grant opened up, so we had identified the 596, and as a rule, we'll be filing that accordingly. We're pleased that we're able to expand the spectator to per family. Reading Across America Day last week, actually, the elementary schools in particular continue to celebrate Reading Across America. There's different things happening in different schools, from Book Furs to March Madness, about which is the best book, and so on, so forth. So, it's always nice to participate in that day in the schools also. Just a reminder that we do, tomorrow, we have a Board Facilities Committee, and that will be looking at solar panels for some of the schools. We are following different legislation, going through the Education Committee and Appropriations Committee. I'm also working very closely with the town regarding the SRO legislation. That is essentially being kept to State Department of Education Committee, primarily the opposition is around districts where they don't think it works. In some cases, it's really never said, but in some cases, they're thinking maybe inner-city schools, and perhaps there is profiling behind it, and so on, so forth, and it's not a good thing for children. That's not the case here, and I don't think it's a broad brush for all. I don't even think that's the case in general, to be honest with you. They do, our department does a phenomenal job, and we'll work closely with them to make sure our voice is at the table about how SROs can be implemented successfully. So, I don't think it's going to come full circle this session. It'll probably go to committee, but we'll continue to have a voice there in that capacity. We do have a tour of the schools on March 13th. We did restrict a little bit of participation. There is two members from each of the, from the Boards and Committees, and it's likely going to be restricted to 25 people. I've been talking to Mr. Knopf, the town director, just because we have to social distance, and we also have to wear masks in the school. We will have it posted, recorded on Saturday, and have that up by early Saturday evening, so that people can at least see it. So, that's just a wee bit of background about how Saturday will work. Parent conferences, one of the things that actually, operationally out of this is that we've learned, maybe consider, maybe offering this type of format for parent conference in the future is something to consider. So, it's 17th, 18th, and 19th, and we have of March. And there's one evening that we're trying out, and we'll see how that goes, because that was, that was an opportunity through the contract to provide parents with an evening opportunity. I just shared with the Board CAPS Blueprint. I will share this online too. I'll post it. That's a Connecticut super tennis organization. That's their entire blueprint for funding and for programs and instruction moving forward. I don't necessarily agree with every single thing in it. I did provide the link for you, but this is, you know, you can certainly just look through this, flip through this easily and look at things. But, these are the things that the CAPS organization is promoting through the legislature and through their other organizations. And they'll be asking for Boards to look at that too. So, likely that will come through CAP for our own Board to look at. The planning meetings for Calvin Gifted, we've had several of them, so we are up and running there. I will send a communication to Board just about a little bit of feedback that would be helpful to me in terms of specific things that perhaps you might be looking for, just to make sure that they are included. Currently, we are advertising for a variety of positions. A middle school principal. This summer's announced her retirement, so we have posted that position. Although we understand the budget has to be passed, we have posted for the assistant principals, for again, it's a hiring period, the hiring season, so it's important that we at least have that advertisement site. The Director of Elementary Curriculum is also posted, and parents and staff will be involved in the interview process of all of those particular positions. Summer School website is up and running. There are some new tutorials that are being provided, additional tutorials for each grade level for math and literacy. And those are all on the website, and a couple of wee updates are included in the site. So, if any parents wanted to peruse that for the summer, you might do so, but there's that additional program that's been added. The Friday asynchronous work, there's a lot of work going into this asynchronous work, and it's been updated every couple of weeks, so we have updated again. There's about 20 people who are taking advantage of that for the investment. It's a lot of investment, but we wanted to provide that, and we have provided that, and that's just a wee sense. And by the time we get back, we'll have celebrated St. Patrick's Day. So, I wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day before we get back. The transition meetings are all underway. Those are both special services oriented and whole class oriented. So, those are up and running, and you should be seeing those parents have been participating in those processes. And I thank again the staff for facilitating those.
Included, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Dr. Adley. Moving on to approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on February 23rd, 2021, and minutes of the special meeting held on February 25th, 2021? Mr. Maroni, Mrs. Ritchie, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to Board Committee reports. Mrs. Stein.
Sorry, the Policy Committee has changed our next meeting date. We will be meeting on Wednesday, March 24th, at 8:30. It was previously scheduled for Friday, the 19th.
Okay. Thank you. There is an Oxbridge Building Committee meeting tomorrow at 10:00. That continues to move along. There's a discussion tomorrow on some value management items that we're cleaning up as we move forward. It will be on the tour Saturday, and there will not be access to the site, but we'll have a nice picture of what's coming, so people can get an idea to the size of the Hill of Mud and maybe even see how deep the hole is. And then, as the weather clears, we'll look to get some time to get the Board out there to see progress, maybe as steel comes in and footers are poured and stuff like that. So, but that project continues to move forward and continues to be exciting. Any other Board Committee reports? Moving on to Presentations and Discussions. Dr. Adley, update on schools?
So, I have probably touched on some of these, and sort of thankfully, we're sort of turning the corner a little bit. So, in some cases, there's less to say, but that's okay. So, we'll just go through a couple of it. The in-person learning I just mentioned, and it's good to see the kids back, and I think they're delighted to be back in person. Spectator policy, I won't be repetitive. The COVID metrics, if you look at, this is, this is, this is the current one as of March 4th. If you want to just adjust those bottom lines, I can share with you. They're 18, 158, reading left to right, 274, and 1982. So, it'll give you a wee sense of 11 between the middle school and the high school. So, we continue, you've seen as what parents get every night. If you don't get one, it's because there are none. And we've had a few days where we haven't had any, so that's good. This map, sort of, just looking at the map just tells you, like, that used to be full, full of red, so now that is changing. So, that's, again, that is encouraging news. Darien's cases are also reduced, as is Fairfield County. And this is the latest from the Town Health Department. That comes, that is published every Thursday, so you can see how much it has dropped off, which is an encouraging sign, and we would like it to be there, continuing that way. The number of remote learners, it fluctuates. We better not say that there's a massive pattern or a correlation. Certainly, the more people are quarantined, the more remote learners we have, and as we go through that cycle a little bit. But you can see that it's remaining in the high numbers of 400s and 500s there. So, we just report on that. The Governor's Restrictions, so let's see how those apply. So, as of March, I think it's 19th, you're going to have inside is 100, outside is going to be 200. So, we'll see how those commercial standards apply to schools. I fully anticipate being on, been on the weekly calls with the State Department of Education and Public Health. I fully anticipate that we're going to have some form of graduation, right? We have it outside anyway, so having it outside, I feel comfortable, at least now, I would say that the chances are we are. I don't, I guess I have to just wait and see a little bit. But that is kind of where we're going and what we're planning for. I would anticipate something similar for the transition grade levels to be able to do some of that. So, we'll see how that plays out. Other than that, the Governor's press conference last week, and also today, the travel is not going to be required to come back and the testing. Honestly, that's, I mean, we can say you recommend it, but it doesn't mean anything. So, I think we'll probably go along with that, because to require it while it's not being required by the state is nearly unreasonable to think that that's going to happen, and we may as well not pretend that it is. Would encourage people to do the distancing and practice good safety practices, but I think we would have to, and will go along with that after March 19th. So, those are a couple of things that are there with the Governor's restrictions that, just extrapolating how they may apply to us. Alicia, have I missed anything out there in our summary, or is there anything you would like to update the Board on?
Just the travel piece, I don't know. I know you mentioned it. It's just that there won't be a requirement for the testing to return to Connecticut, or, you know, it won't be mandated. It'll be recommended, and as used as a guideline. So, we'll probably be following the same thing. We've talked a little bit with David Knopf and Tim Keneffek about that piece. And, you know, we just had a lot of cases today. So, we're just still seeing that spread in the social, social setting and in houses and homes. So, we're really encouraging people to stay home, even if they have very mild symptoms. Fortunately, the COVID that we're seeing right now is pretty mild, but nonetheless, nobody wants to be diagnosed with COVID. So, we're just trying to do what we can to educate families to keep their kids home when they have mild symptoms.
Alicia, I think it's fair to say, without naming sports or particular, because it's too close to families, but we can see things going through families. And some of them are not surprising, but that's not really a story we can tell on a nightly basis. But we can observe that. Is that a first statement?
It is. You know, it seems like once it's, once somebody in a household tests positive, even if they're isolated away from the rest of the family, it seems like it's still spreading. So, it's really important that we follow the quarantine and the people that are in the home that haven't been tested positive for COVID are still remaining in quarantine and not going out and attending any social functions or sporting events or whatever, because we are just seeing that they do kind of tend to test positive somewhere in that first 10 days. In their, in the person who tested positives, 10 days of isolation. We're seeing the family members, one by one, start to slowly test positive over that 10-day period. So, it's really important to, you know, if you stay quarantined and at home, it keeps it from spreading to other people.
So, I'm happy to open a floor to questions. I will say, just if you don't mind me just being redundant, there are times where I feel really, really proud of certain things that happened. This is one of them. I'm not being shy about it, not for, not for ourselves as a Board or for self, particularly for our staff, or, again, I just reiterate, the quality of education, because I don't know if you know other districts. I do, and it's very, very impressive, and it's a sort of pride and appreciation. So, I just reiterate that again. I know you feel the same way, but. Having said that, I'm opening up a floor for any question.
Mr. Steeny.
Along the lines of quarantine, the Department of Health of the State of Connecticut gave us two options alongside CDC guidelines. And I don't know if the Governor's recent announcement changed around March 19th, but their second option was a seven-day quarantine with a testing option in there. Alicia, do you know if any of that has changed? And then, I have a follow-on.
No, that hasn't changed.
Okay, so the follow-on is, would the district at some point consider that second option to, you know, the seven-day with a test within the fifth day of quarantine?
So, originally, whenever that question was, I think that question, I don't know if you posted it at the time, but it came up at the time. We probably brought it up to suggest that we weren't doing that because it was so hard to manage, and a lot of Alicia talked to it, I think, but it continues to be so hard to manage, and we're still seeing people here getting, being contacts like from day seven to 10. Like, look at today. Today would be just a logistical nightmare to manage, to be honest with you, I think. But, anyway, Alicia, I don't know if I've captured that correctly, but I think I have.
So, when we, when we are doing the contact tracing and quarantining, sometimes, for one case, the days may be different. You know, somebody may have last been exposed to that person on them, for today's example, on Monday or Sunday. So, their return dates are different. So, then trying to figure out, you know, the seven, the five days from then for testing, and then make sure that they provided the testing that's negative for day seven. I just, I think that it's just so much to try and keep track of. And then it's who didn't get tested, who did get tested. But even still, even with that, even if we work through all the logistics of trying to manage that piece, we are still seeing people in quarantine test positive after day seven, even with a negative test earlier in quarantine. So, I just think right now, just looking at the amount of people testing positive from day seven to 10, if we allowed them to come back at day seven, and then they started with symptoms on day eight or nine, we've now reintroduced them into the classroom or the community and we, with the kids that are, that just came back, and then they end up back in quarantine for another, you know, seven days. I just, I think the numbers right now just don't really bode well for, for doing that. But, you know, as the spring goes on, we can think about it. But I still am seeing people start to test positive or test positive after being exposed somewhere between day seven and 10. And I think it's too risky.
Mrs. McCammon.
I asked this last time about the, if there's additional preparations to do after the vaccine clinic. Again, exciting, but knowing that there may be a number of people who have symptoms that may preclude their return to school. Is there anything we are doing differently other than holding the clinics on Friday and Saturday on the off chance? We have a problematic number of people who have side effects.
Are we talking about staff?
Yeah.
Yep. So, the clinic itself is scheduled for that Saturday of the holiday. And I've spoken actually as of no later than this afternoon with Dr. Keneffek. And the symptoms themselves are contained primarily within, it should be for a full, if you're getting it on a Saturday, Sunday should be the period where you have some discomfort, and maybe more significant than the first. And probably they've shared that it's not unlike 20% of the population. In this case, the staff may feel that way. But this should be on Monday. It should be okay. I'm planning for Monday to be in session, because if I have to cover, I'll tell you, it's much easier to cover in session when we're in school. And so, other than sharing with the staff, which we will, some things to consider in terms of how to look after yourself and wellness, and so on, so forth. The best scenario for recovery is actually when we are actually in school, because there could be a scenario where, if you were doing remote learning or something, or have to still have to cancel school, because if people are too sick, that would be. So, the best scenario actually is for the, for the children to be, actually be in the school setting. So, I will say that for substitutes, we certainly have met, we actually met today about substitutes and trying to plan accordingly for that day, at least, looking at what we normally do and getting a base, first of all, ensuring that a base, and then we get locked in for some substitutes, what we would norm, and a sort of normal expectation, perhaps. And then, if we need more, we would, we would acquire them at the time. So, it doesn't preclude something happening, but then again, it doesn't preclude, it's like, given these numbers, it could be a scenario where we have to close school still. That certainly wouldn't be the intent. So, hopefully, we won't have to disturb anybody's Easter Sunday or early Monday morning. But at this point, we anticipate, given what we would expect people to be able to come to school, to have in-school session, and again, if people are out for illness, then it's the easiest way to actually provide the coverage for the children. So, I guess, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's what's happening.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Yes, Mrs. McCammon.
My other question is about the asynchronous learning in the 20 students. I think that number sounds a little bit low. So, I was just curious if we could follow up with the, particularly the elementary school principals and make sure that parents are aware that it's an option. Are we fully satisfied that people know that they have that choice? That, you know, again, it could be that people are just happy to have their Friday afternoon, but given the number of dual-income houses, it sounds low to me.
Oh, it is low. Let's not tell about it as low. I think actually during our elementary principal made me reminded them that, actually, this particular week. So, yeah, do that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? Good. Thank you all. Moving on, Presentations and Discussions. A bridge presentation and discussion on Darien High School, second semester enrollment distribution. Mr. Rivera.
Hi, Paul. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight on the distribution report for the high school for the spring. Am I allowed to share my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. So, similar to the fall, the way that we break down this report is by looking at the different content areas and the average class sizes for each of them. You'll see in the last column on the right, the 2021 spring column, the average class sizes for the content areas are very similar to what we experienced in the fall. Not much has changed. The overall class size for our five major content areas remains steady at 17. And below that are the content areas for our electives and the average class sizes for those, which again, remain pretty consistent from the fall. The next chart talks about our average caseload for each of our teachers in their content areas. Again, remain very similar from the fall. We saw, obviously, some dips here and there from the last spring. A lot of this is due to some of the steps that we took over the summer in preparation for the school year and making some choices and some decisions regarding social distancing in the classrooms. And so, that's why you see some of the overall numbers gone down from last spring. But again, this is very similar to what And so that's why you see some of the overall numbers gone down from last spring. But again, this is very similar to what we discussed back in the fall. Our distribution of class size from below 16, 16 and 20 and over 20. You'll see again that, that middle column, the 16 to 20 or middle row, I should say, is our highest. And again, a lot of this was due to us trying to maintain social distancing in the classrooms. And this is consistent with what we saw in the fall too, with about that 56% similar. The next looks at some of our smaller classes that we have for the spring. And this also takes into account our courses that we have that also have lab support. Our labs are typically pretty small. So this takes into account those two. So again, from the fall, it's a number that's pretty consistent. And the majority of these are from some of our labs that we have for the content areas. For our large classes, what we categorizes over 25, we remain consistent from the fall where we still have that one class. It's a B C. Calculus class that we have in our math department that still has 25 kids in it. But other than that, we don't have any other courses that are above that 25 number that we kind of look for. Which you can see from previous years has gone steadily down and we've tried really hard to, to maintain that. And then finally, we have our overall counselor student load, which remained at 172, which is just a drop of one student from the, the fall. In comparison to our Derg counterparts, this is very comparable. We have approximately, the Derg average is approximately 180. Per counselor and we're at 172. So again, we're very comparable to our Derg, other Derg high schools. So just overall, again, I think the big takeaways from what we saw in the data from the spring report is that much of it remained the same from the fall. We remain very consistent. And again, with the counselor loads, when comparing it to the other Dergs, again, we're very comparable to them. As far as our overall numbers. And now if there is any questions from the board?
Thank you, Paul. I'll open up the board questions and comments. Mrs. Ackman.
Thank you for, hi, Mr. Bear. I have a question, just as we see those numbers falling, which in some ways was our goal. Do you think that's due to increased? Course offering, general enrollment, a mixture of both. And I understand this year is a bit of a aberration anyway.
Yeah, no, in all honesty, this year is a bit of aberration because of the steps that we took with social distancing and trying to lower our class numbers. For instance, our science labs, we, we are not offering science labs this year because of that. In past years, our science teachers would teach. Four courses every semester, but because we're not offering the labs, they're teaching five. So we're just able to open up more sections of science, which means that would bring down our average class size. So. It was certain steps like that that we took. So it's not from a lack of interest of students taking electives or things like that. It's from some decisions that we made to try to just lower the class sizes. Because of the social distancing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rivera, I know conversations have started with the counselors, with the juniors on colleges and all that good stuff. Seeing some stuff is still remote with the parents. And some anxiousness with these students about testing and non-testing and what colleges are doing. Is there anything you guys need at the counselor level to help support a lot of the challenges? As the juniors start this whole process?
I'm sure Megan would always say yes to an additional counselor if someone wants to get her on. But I think they.
Time, I want to make sure they have what they need.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, I think that, that, that they do and the counselors work really hard and have been really trying to meet the needs of all the kids. And keep up to date with what the colleges are requiring, which is changing, it seems like almost daily. So. They're doing a great job up there and I think at this point they have everything that they need, but if those things change, I'm sure she'll let Dr. Adley know.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Thank you so much for the report. I really appreciate all the work that goes into it. I just have a question about. Planning for next year and as you start to plan out the classes and. I'm not sure when students start making their selections, but can you just remind me when? When that process starts and then when you guys start making decisions about what is school going to look like next year? In other words, are we going to have labs for science? Or are we going to have smaller class sections?
Yes. So, so all that quite frankly is going on right now. When we got back from February break is when students started meeting with their counselors to review their course selections for next year. They had course conversations with their teachers prior to February break. And then were able to make their selections in Aspen and now the counselors are currently still following up with them. In addition to that, we've been having our eighth to ninth grade articulation meetings with those special education students. And those supports are also being taken into account now as we go ahead and plan for next year. We're currently in a last, in the process of talking about next year and seeing what the guidance is going to be from the state. And coming up with alternative plans. So a final decision hasn't been made yet as far as what we're going to do. We get a sense that we're definitely going to be asked and, and recommended to do certain things to prepare for the fall, to maintain some of the social distancing, but we don't know to what extent at this point. So that, that's all currently ongoing. I don't know when the final decision will be released about that, but. We, we've started talking about it. We, you know, we're not folding off on it. We definitely have started talking about it already. But the most important thing is the kids are very active talking to their counselors and their courses for next year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Great. Paul, thank you very much. Thanks for spending some time with us.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Moving along on presentations and discussions, see. Consideration of contemplated gifts, the Darien Foundation, Darien High School. The Darien Foundation and the Darien High School Boys and Girls Soccer Programs. Dr. Adley.
Thank you. We have two gifts this evening. I'm pleased to introduce the first gift, which is on behalf of the Darien Foundation. And I don't know if people are on, I just can't see, but we may have people watching from the foundation. I don't know if Robin Nelson. Is, is, is on. She's a member, Sarah Woodbury, who's the executive director. They may be on, if we can see them, I'm not sure. Do we see them? Okay, right there. Robin and Sarah, if you're there, welcome. I'd just like to share with the board, this, this is a very gracious gift. And this was first indicated back in November to the board where we, we flagged that robotics and robotics would not be in it and that that would pursue. Opportunity for independent funding and the Darien Foundation, certainly since I've been come on board, has been asking if there's areas and. That we, that they could assist with and that this is just a tremendous, I just see it as a tremendous opportunity to kickstart and to continue. The idea of STEM for all kids, K to 12 kids, right? I want to thank. Christopher and also Joan for all of their work in this capacity. Once, once these programs get going, they create a tremendous amount. We better think like they care for what you create. But these, these programs for all kids. Create a tremendous amount of, of just energy, enthusiasm. Robotics. Has also the side of it where it involves the community at large because you need mentors, you need to, you need to outreach and. Provide people who are going to work with the children and, and the advisors for the programs. So this proposal. We went to the proposal through the Darien Foundation back in January. And we shared that with the board of what that proposal actually was. And they graciously, for a two-year program, have graciously donated over $200,000. In, in kind for services to actually get this extracurricular program up. Now, in furnace, the policy says that. We have to be careful about accepting gifts that would not continue, right? So in the communication, I've shared that it would be, would be the intent if it's successful. If it's not successful, it's not. I certainly wouldn't propose something if I didn't think it was going to be successful, but if it was successful, in all likelihood. It would have to come back, well, it would have to come back through the superintendent's budget and then be approved by the board. That's understood because it doesn't become part. Fully part of, of, of the programming until and if the board actually supports it at that particular time. So. I point that out because that's a, I'm starting something. And with the potential of, that would have to be carried over with the board's expenses in a future budget, but. It's just a tremendously exciting opportunity. Couldn't be any more appreciative of. Of such a gracious gift. I'll continue to work, have to work with. The union, DEA in terms of. Stipend in terms of what that would be. We have put in stipends just as a placeholder, so to speak. And we'll continue in that discussion, but I, I just couldn't be any more. Grateful for the opportunity. I just think it's going to endanger a tremendous amount of. Energy and passion with parents and students and staff and the, and the community. So. I'll stop talking because I'm just. But that's.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Adley. Mrs. Ritchie.
First of all, thank you to the Darien Foundation. For me, this is a very exciting program that I, I hope is very successful and we see in our fiscal year 24 budget. My question is, I guess at this point, we really don't know for certain what the ongoing expenses would be and we can get obviously more into that when it comes to us for approval, but. I'm guessing it'll be in the range of like $94,000 annual expense.
In all honesty, it's, it's really hard for me to actually speculate what that is because there's a variety of things that go into it. The. These tends to take off where there's fundraising gets involved. So I'll have to sort of navigate that. The expenses to get up and running is one thing, but then there's annual costs. So. I'm just a wee bit hesitant because I also have to see where the stipends land also. I'm a wee bit hesitant just there at this point to say that it would be. 100,000 or whatever. Because it's just so many ways for, for it to be offset and for it to fall out.
I think it'll be exciting to get a regular update on it. And as part of that update, I think some of those things will start to come to light for you. Good. Mrs. Stein.
Alan, going back to the stipend, I think we have to sort of be clear on that. Given historically for new clubs.
Correct.
They don't get a stipend in year one.
Correct.
So I think in your conversations with the DA, I mean, this is a departure from. Our practice. So just want to make sure that the expectation isn't. Changed for clubs, right? This is a unique situation. But how are we handling that?
So there's two ways, there's two ways to handle it. I, I put it in because I wanted to put in the possible expense that it, that it could be. So one way is that it's. That. The advisors do it under the current situation. So we, we have a working practice, should I say, I think, for those people who've been here longer than me, obviously. Where the club is two years and then it proves it's worth and. In that, in that regard, it proves it's worth because it comes back to the board and the board then approves, it goes into a budget. That's how it's officially adapted. This is different. In my opinion, it's different, right? Because it's not coming through the general. Scenario where a teacher and a group of students come and say, can we, can we try this out for two years? And then the endorsement by the board is. Is at that particular time. At this point. The board would be endorsing at this point. It's a different, it's, we're saying we are doing this program and you. You would potentially then have to negotiate. An honor or stipend for it, or it work out where, where there is none, right? So that just remains to be determined. I do see it a wee bit different than, than a regular club scenario. And potentially we can handle it that way.
Mrs. Ackman.
So is this a, I'm confused maybe by the terminology. Is this a club? Or are you starting clubs? Or are you starting a program within the Darien schools? Because. I see we're talking about programming. But then. We've got extracurricular clubs.
If I went back, if I went back and reframed this discussion, I think I would just call it clubs, but it's, we're calling one program that consists of the 12 clubs. That's basically the way we're, we're describing it. But essentially it is a robotics extracurricular club at each of the grade levels, essentially.
Okay.
I just didn't want to confuse people.
Yes, Mrs. Ackman.
I, then I, I would second Mrs. Stein's concern. That I think we would need to wrestle with a little bit. And then my other question was. This is completely generous and wonderful of the Darien Foundation. But I think as a board, what, what I would look to see from the administration is. What is this club doing? I mean, if we're accepting the gift, I don't, I don't know what we're doing yet.
So I, I did provide that, but I can, I can provide it again if, if you wanted, I would have to.
No, I have, I have the memo, but I think, can we talk a little bit about it in public?
Yes.
Being asked publicly to talk, accept 200,000.
Oh, sure.
Explain a little bit what you see. I mean, I have the memo, but.
Yes.
Everyone else doesn't. So can we explain a little bit about what you envision?
So that, so, so there, there are, well, I'll just, in the memo, there's, there's, there's links to slides and videos and so on and so forth. Joan, do you, or Christie, one of the, I can, I can talk to it easily, but it's just. I'll be happy to. Frame it or.
It looks like Dr. McGedigan's ready to go.
So in general, we're thinking about exploratory robotics. From K through three. So those are. Robots called B-bots and Wonderbots and they're low level programming where students can really understand. Basic coding and how to direct robots, how to avoid rocks, obstacles. What happens when it meets a certain color? And then from fourth grade through eighth grade, they move on to first Lego League where, where they're actually building the robot. And then doing much more sophisticated programming. Working together to make things work. Doing some, some outreach that's associated with that program. And then at the high school level, it's much more sophisticated. It is not building robots from parts that are supplied. But instead you're learning how to, to weld and construct things and working with mentors on. Developing robots that are very sophisticated from medium sized to very large robots. That do all sorts of interesting things. And there's a lot of opportunities for team building. For outreach, for working with mentors. And for working with schools all around the region. So we're really looking forward to growing the program. But basically it moves from exploration. To a bit more sophistication to at the high school level. Really good real world experiences and true construction of robots and truly sophisticated coding.
Thank you, Mrs. McGedigan. Mr. Maroni.
Yeah, so I'm looking at this on a facilities hat, is do we have the space and. And the room in the schools to embark on this one. And thank you for the Darien Foundation. It's a wonderful program, but do we have the facilities to, to do exactly as Mr. McGedigan is putting forward?
So most, most of the facilities at the elementary level and up through middle school, for the most part, is in the, in the. Technology areas or the, or the media center is. I will say over time, it will probably cause a space initially. It, it, there is a wee bit of that in terms of sometimes that, once this takes off, I mean, it could be a couple, a couple of years or so before we get there, but. There, there perhaps would be identified space and needs at that point as you have, now you've got three robots, where do you put these things? So, so I haven't recognized that, Mr. Maroni. And I certainly don't want to be flippant about it in the sense of sort of build a label common and you, but. I think those, I, I don't think initially the space will be a problem. I think we'll have to like continue to, to address that as, as the. The club sort of advancing. But potentially that is potentially down the line. It's not unusual for high school, it's not going to be looking for space that, that they keep. Essentially the robots.
I'm, I'm sure some of this has been socialized. Is there a idea as to the interest, especially at the high school level in terms of numbers of students?
Well, so we haven't, I, I didn't want to get ahead of myself with.
Fair enough.
Advertising this or suggesting or soliciting, I'd like to.
It's out there now. Mr. Steeny.
Along those lines though, given that we might take, the district might take the baton from this awesome gift, if you could keep metrics. Over the next couple of years, I mean, since this is a really different way of creating a club, so that when you do come back to the board, hopefully with wild success, you have some metrics to support it.
Good. Mrs. Ackman.
Two questions. One, is this always envisioned as. Two questions. One, is this always envisioned as remaining a club? Or at some point is this looking to be created on a class? And if not, why are we beginning as a club?
So that's a good question, right? And a very pertinent question.
I think so.
A very pertinent question. It's a wee bit, it's a wee bit of reverse, right? In some cases, you provide the extracurricular experiences and then that drives a lot of the other thing a little bit. So I would say in this case, it's not on typical, particularly though, the higher grade levels, if you have a robotics club, that eventually you have a robotics plus. Right? This is, so, but I'm, I'll just be honest, we're trying to engage people and create an excitement about it and energy around it. It's hard to see that when you don't do it. And what it's like, you can put, it wouldn't preclude from putting like our bodies course then independently on its own. We have, we have put forward some STEM classes this particular year and those are things that will likely come out, not unlikely to come out of this particular process to be successful.
And then just the follow up to that is, do you have any sense of how many children will be able to avail themselves of this if it's a club?
We have 400 that we have listed at this point. So we speculate 400. Down the system. Okay to throw. Yes.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Just along those lines, I, maybe I'm wrong, but I think it'll be very popular. There probably should be some thought to how, when you go out to the community, how it would work in terms of how you register the students for the, the program.
Mr. Brown.
Thanks. I just wanted to comment and say thank you very much to the Darian Foundation for your generosity here and for taking the initiative with this effort. And also thank you to Dr. Adley for coordinating and bringing this before the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. McCammon.
A couple of years ago, when we were doing the libraries, we imagined work. There was, that's when we started to see the maker space, talk a lot about maker spaces and see the maker fairs. And I'm excited, this concept of robotics is one of the things that they were playing with at that time. So I'm excited to see a home for this specific set of work. I, I do think it's something that the school system's been interested in and that we could see, you know, some early signs of not that long ago. So I think it's great news.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Mrs. Parent.
Who will be the point person? Is it Dr. McGeadigan that will be overseeing it all or it's?
Well, essentially that, that, you have to have some, I mean, you have to have advisors of some description. So essentially advisors, but that would be Joan and it would also be Mr. Trambor.
Great. Thank you. Any other further questions or comments? I would reiterate again, a lot of good questions and comments from the board. I think we'd like to see more information as this unfolds. I think it's an exciting new endeavor. Mrs. McGeadigan, thank you for all the hard work there. And I know it's been said, but I will once again thank Sarah Woodbury, Robin Nelson, Ward Glassmire. Those are the names on my form, but thank you to the Darian Foundation. It's an incredible partnership. It's a neat way to kick something off, start something new. It's exciting for our students. It shows a continued investment in education and in the STEM curriculum. So thank you very much for the, for the generosity. Thank you. Moving on, Darian High School Boys and Girls Soccer Program gift.
I think Mr. Manfredonia is on. There you are, Chris.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
I am here. Can anybody hear me?
You have.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Adley. So the.
We can't hear you, Mr. Manfredonia. You, you're kind of frozen.
You can't hear me?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. Well, let me try my phone. Hold on. You can hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So. Start over again, just in case someone missed what I donated, which you donate.
Mr. Manfredonia, maybe you need to switch to your phone. Turn off the video, might help.
The installation will take place for our facilities department. Yeah.
If you could start again, Mr. Manfredonia, thank you.
Sure. Sorry about that. This is better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Take number three. So Boys and Girls Soccer Program has generously offered to donate covered benches to be permanently installed on the center oval field of the high school for use by not only our soccer programs, but by any field, any team that uses those center oval fields. Traditionally, it's used by Boys and Girls Soccer in the fall and the Boys and Girls Lacrosse Program in the, in the spring. These are nice to have benches, you know, we currently have benches on that facility now. But the, these are unique in that they have a cover on them that would, you know, protect our students from the elements, wind, rain, sun, what it may be. So the parents have donated, wish to donate these, these two items that will be permanently installed by our facilities department. And I thank you for your consideration for these two generous gifts.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredonia. Open up to any bird or board questions or comments. Mr. Maroni.
Just a question, is it, are these benches going to just be on the home side or will they be on, on boat for visitors and as well?
So we, we plan on putting one on the home side and one on the visitor's side.
Oh, that's very generous.
Good question. Nice to be gracious. Good. Mr. Manfredonia, thank you. Please extend our thanks to the organizers, the Girls and Boys Soccer Programs, Erin Belissimo and Kathy Lowe. Again, another generous addition to our athletic complex up there.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Question? Okay. Good point. May I have a motion to approve?
It's not on.
What? There's no action item? Yeah, there are no action items, so.
We don't accept the gift. We don't, you can't accept the gifts. It's just not in one dot way. You can, you can amend the agenda.
No. So we'll amend the. This is not.
No, this part is. It's warned as a special meeting of Education Wednesday, March 15th.
No, that's the executive session.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Second, Mr. Maroni. All in favor? That is unanimous. So may I have a motion to accept the gift from the Darian Foundation for the robotics program of $213,000? Mr. Maroni, Mrs. Ackman, all in favor? That is unanimous. May I have a motion to accept the gift from the Darian High School Boys and Girls Soccer Program? For the benches, that gift is a cost of between $3,000 and $4,000. Mrs. Ackman and Mrs. Ritchie, all in favor? I thank you. Thank you for working through that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you all out there listening for those incredibly generous gifts. Moving along to item D, interim progress report on 2020, 2021 goals and objectives. Dr. Adley.
So I am not going to read to the board. You have in front of you the goals that were set at the start of the year and then attached are job dates. They, everything in there should seem fairly familiar to you in one capacity or another. We're, we're moving through our goals. We're getting there and in some cases have completed some of them. So with your understanding, I'm not just going to, I'll just open it up for discussion if you, if you have any discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Adley. Any board comments or discussion around the goals for 2021, 20, 2020, 2021? Mrs. Ritchie.
Thank you for this update. I just, under advanced teaching and learning, I just, I wanted to get a sense as we move along through COVID and the impact it's having on our students. What, what are we looking at in terms of assessing our students, meeting them, where, greeting them where they are and adapting our curriculum as needed as we move along? What have we done so far? What are we looking at right now and what do we see in the future?
So, so far we've worked with our curriculum leaders and grade level leaders to prioritize units and adjust the pacing guide in our assessment calendar throughout the year. And to look ahead to next year, there are about 12 of us right now that are in a four-part professional development on dealing with exactly what you're asking. How do you prioritize grade level standards when you come back to school and not focus all of the time on remediation? So we are actually engaged as leaders in that professional learning now and we'll use that work and infuse it into curriculum writing this summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Thank you, Mr. Trambor. Mrs. Parent.
Thank you. I'm also a little more curious about the, the Friday professional development time and how you see that's working out. And if you see that, you know, that'll be needed throughout the rest of the year or, and how is that working out?
I would say it's definitely needed for the rest of the year because schedules were created, especially at the elementary level. That's the only time that teams have to work together. So it's become essential in just how we would typically function. That's, that's the guaranteed time they have with the team. The, the time is used for a variety of reasons that range from technology. Now that hopefully we're not between all kinds of modes of learning, we can, we can shift away from focusing on that. But there's been a lot of work that we've done on how to engage students, not only when they're learning remotely, but engaging students when they're in rows and often have barriers around them is a very different feeling. And it's a different way of, of these students experiencing school, even though a lot of us around here can very much relate to. That's how we experience school minus the barriers. But word, the time's been incredibly valuable. All of the teachers that I've spoken with have found it to be of, of great use. So I know everyone appreciates that time.
Thank you.
Mr. Seeny.
In, during the pandemic, I'd just be interested to understand how we're monitoring the social and emotional wellbeing kind of along to the last question and just given the, the challenges that none of these children have faced.
Yeah, it's, to say that we're not all children and adults impacted socially and emotionally by the past year would, would not be fair to, to say because we've all reacted differently to it. We rely very much on the relationships that teachers have with their students to monitor that and also rely on our mental health providers to step in when necessary. But we do have responsive classroom that we use for time at the elementary level, especially for teachers to talk and set the day. We have lessons embedded and we're relying on that advisory and flex time at the secondary level. And as you know, in the budget for next year, looking at ruler, the hard part about ruler is next year's a big year for the adults in developing that culture and language. But I think we can infuse some of that right away. Because one of the challenges is giving adults and children the ability to use language to express how they're feeling. And that's one of the limitations that we have as a society. And that's one of the things that ruler does to, to help address social and emotional learning needs is give everyone the language to talk about how they're feeling and then the strategies to cope with that.
Go ahead, Mr. Seeny.
I'm going to steal one of your lines, Mr. Chairman. Are you guys getting enough resources on the psychological side of things amongst the school psychologists? You know, are we certain that we're kind of meeting, meeting that need, especially at the junior high?
I, there's no evidence that we're not. So I, I feel like we're, we're incredibly supported. Mrs. Ackman asked a great question in the budget process about the plan was to start ruler at the elementary level next year. And would it be helpful if we could start it at the, at, at the district at the same time? And the answer to that is yes. And I'm, I'm working with, trying to make that work with our grant funding in order to be able to do that if possible.
And if I may just add to that, Chris, also on the question about psychologists. And we had spoken, we have 17 psychospool psychologists, district-wide, two in each elementary school, three at middle, six, three at the high school and one at Fitch, as well as two social workers and, and of course, all of our school counselors. So I know that we had shared with the board at another time, but we're, we're, we're greatly appreciative of all of the resources we have for mental health. And they'll continue to work in the classrooms and outside the classrooms to support all our students. So we, we feel that we are able to, to really support all of our students and social, emotional learning and are very excited about ruler as well.
I'll add one more thing because you mentioned the word, how do we assess it? One of the ways that we assess it formatively on a regular basis is how students interact with each other. And we've created so many conditions this year that kids can't do that as much. So next year is going to be very important because I'm being, as the eternal optimist, that we're going to be able to do those things again. And that's when we're going to have to look really closely because did, did some people forget how to play nice? Because they haven't had to play in a year.
Good. Mrs. Ackman.
So following up on part of Mr. Seeny's question and your answer, which I appreciate. But I do think there's been probably a challenge for students in kind of creating that typical relationship they might with students because they've been out of school. So if that's one of the things we're relying on. Do we have a way to gauge if those relationships are strong enough? Not by the fault of the teacher or a student, but just the nature of being remote and stuff. Some of those relationships, I haven't, have we either communicated with parents or gauge with teachers? If, if they're unsure and they're concerned about a student, but they, they haven't built that relationship. Have we created some pathways that are different because the school year is so different? So that people without the language still know that we're there, we can reach out. Their, their children can reach out.
So there's, the most important part, I would say, is the path to making sure we're not missing any students that need help. And I think we have good systems in place to do that. Right about now is when we start to shift our gears to think about what does next year look like? And how are we opening and how are we going to do these things? So those are all things that are very much worth thinking about. And I think about some ways to collect that information, I think from students as well as the parents for sure and teachers. It's all of those groups.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mrs. Ritchie.
Well, just building on that a little bit, I think the counselors could be a great resource at all levels. You know, the elementary, but the, at the middle and the high school. And maybe there's a way for them to assess. I know they have a lot of students they're assessing, but just do a sort of quick assessment of each of their students just to see where they are and how they're doing. The counselors that I've encountered are wonderful. So I, I think they're all probably doing that right now, but that would be a good way to sort of, you know, check in, make sure everyone's getting a check in. Not just someone that's asked for a check in, but everyone gets a check in with parent and student. How are they doing? Everybody good? You know, that sort of thing.
We did, working with Thriving Youth, we did include some COVID-related questions in that survey. So that will provide us a little bit of feedback also because that's already been administered.
Dr. Adley, I know you've mentioned something about summer school and Mr. Tranberg, are we? I know it becomes, it's an option for people, summer school, or you got the early, the extended year program. Things clean up, clear up, maybe most people want to get out of town. But are we using the resources and the infrastructure we have in summer school to make any type of offerings to parents and students over the course of the summer? Is there anything we need to do differently? Are there any resources you need to use that infrastructure? For anything that you see between now and the end of the year that we can at least make the offer?
I would say the, the infrastructure is certainly there. So we have great systems in place and we've created some courses for. They're especially designed for people that want to catch up on those grade level skills or they're a little bit worried that they're not there. This is, this is not a design to, can I get ahead of third grade before I get to third grade? Because that's not, that's not going to help anyone when we're talking about social and emotional health.
Right.
If, if we don't have concerns and you can go away, then, then go away and, and read a lot. Like those are the things that, that are helpful. So I just want to make sure that message isn't lost, that please get your kids into, to summer programming because our learning is about focusing on grade level standards next year and working using the systems that we have, whether that's general instruction or SRBI to make sure that we're giving students the support that they need.
Good. And I think exactly how you said it's important, anything you can do around communication with respect to summer school and what you just said would be important for people to fully understand what's available in the research.
And we're also back to assessing SEL. We're building that into SRBI as we're planning ahead next year, making sure that the, that side of, of the pyramid, so to speak, is as robust as the academic side of the interventions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tranberg. Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Any other questions or comments around that? Anything else on the Board of Education goals? Good. Can I keep my glasses on? Moving along, discussion and action on the district strategic plan. Dr. Adley, and I know Dr. Lemmons is also online with us this evening also. Good evening, Dr. Lemmons. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Richard. How are you? As for the board, should have the strategic, the draft of the strategic plan that has been updated since last we spoke. So we took the board's feedback. We made some. has been updated since last we spoke. So we took the board's feedback. We made some recommendations. I'm excited tonight to hopefully I'm hoping tonight that we can actually get this adapted and approved. I'll talk through a couple of the week changes that, that were made based on the feedback. So thank you to the board for revision, the mission statement, making modifications. So it is as as the board we, as we left it, right, with the revision. So there wasn't, there really wasn't too much. I don't think we actually touched it at all at this point. The next change is on goal one, one A. And it's the bottom action step. And timeline and measure were added. So that's one A. Design instruction to address students' individual learning needs. So that was a discussion we had and we added in that action and that measure. I'll just take a healthy pause and then move on to the next one. The next change that we made was goal area two. That was to be down in the right-hand corner under measure to be evidence of changes in policy, programs and practices. So that's to be the measure, the second measure. The next change was on goal five. Five A, under measure. We talked about the data, district's communication strategy to measure impact and added in there was efficacy. And I believe, I know, not that, not the last one, but close to it, goal area six, the goal itself. We added in and student activities.
I just have one question on that.
Sure.
On the action item, down the third action item. It just states support, teaching and learning and that other and student activities wasn't added. I didn't know if that was necessary or not, but.
Yeah, that would probably be added in there.
Okay.
I think that's probably an oversight or an adjustment if the board's okay with that. And then on goal area seven, under measures. The third measure was, we just delineated the constituents, which was students, parents and staff, the survey. And with that, I think we captured the changes at Richard or Christopher. Seeny, I think, I think those were the changes. Happy to have any further discussion, but I'm, I'm excited to hopefully get this approved this evening. It's an exciting milestone also.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Anything you wanted to add, Dr. Lemmons?
No, I think, I think the superintendent captured the changes perfectly.
Great. Thank you. I'll open it up for board questions or comments. Good. You good? You move forward with a motion to move forward with approving the strategic plan. Mrs. Parent, second by Mrs. Stein, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. That is exciting.
That is exciting, everyone. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
And I think again, all the hard work, several members of the board, members of the community, Dr. Lemmons, the staff, the administration, just thank you very much for an incredible body of work that will guide us going forward and we're excited to continue to work on it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you to the board members and the Strategic Planning Committee too. This is exciting for the district. It's exciting for me, the staff and for the district in general. So thank you. Dr. Lemmons, thank you for leading us through the process. Thank you.
My honor.
Great. Thank you. Moving along, F, update on kindergarten enrollment for 2021, 2022. Mr. Tranberg.
Good evening again, everyone. There is a memo included in the packet that includes current, the kindergarten registration as of March 2nd. There's a table that compares this year to the previous year, the same months. I also received an update from principals today from each of them to see if there were any changes. And there are some minor changes favorably moving those numbers a bit higher. Specifically, I talked to Dr. Mullen about Royal because that one seemed especially low by comparison. And she updated me that the 36 does not include students that are the Royal ELP students that will be in the program next year. So that actual number is 42, which it puts us in a better, more comparable place to the previous year. And so we'll continue watching this closely and look in comparison to what we're projecting and we'll have updates for, for April.
Thank you, Mr. Tranberg. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Seeny.
I tend to overanalyze numbers, but you know, I guess with that adjustment, we're I don't know, somewhere be down under about eight or nine percent below projections. Is that, is that typical? I mean, is there any seasonality this year that we should be looking for relative to previous years, given the, given the pandemic?
When I look at how the data compared in previous years from this period to the next, there's usually a larger jump. And ELP is often factored in for all of the schools at this time, and it wasn't in, in March, but it will be in it will be in April. So that you'll see the numbers go up for ELP as well.
Would it make sense to just break out a column on ELP on this report?
I could try and see if that helps create a better story.
I think that the fact that when we brought everybody in to do it on a final day over the last two years now, we've been doing a roll-in sort of thing, that it's not a definitive date. I think that impacts it perhaps of getting accurate numbers earlier.
Good. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Great. Thank you, Mr. Tranberg. Action items, personal items, appointments, resignations and retirements. Mrs. Scion.
So the P R tonight includes the retirement of Shelley Summers, principal of Middlesex and the resignation of Linda Johnson, one of our elementary program directors, and the rest are people who are beginning to make decisions about next year.
Mrs. Scion, any just quick, high-level insight as to, as you kick off the hiring season? How does that look?
So it's a little early for teachers.
Okay.
Especially elementary because the, but believe me, we've already had a meeting with the elementary principals who want to start hiring as soon as possible. So sign your kids up for kindergarten and we can hire teachers.
Thank you, Mrs. Scion. We'll move on, Michelle, to public comment. Action item, accepting the P R report. Mrs. Stein, Mr. Maroney, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Michelle, we'll move on to public comment.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participant's icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Someone made a comment, if we could have a meeting as quick as the Board of Finance public meeting the other night, nine minutes. I'm not sure that's ever possible, but I think, I think we covered a lot, a lot of good questions and comments and a good meeting. So thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Seeny, Mrs. Akman, all those in favor? Thank you. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you everyone. Thank you very much.
Good weekend. Thank you very much. And happy St. Patrick's Day to Dr. Adley and all.